Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting for Monday, July 15th. I would like everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the rear of the hearing room. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. And we do ask that you please sign the pink sheets in front. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading on the second and last meeting on the month immediately prior to adjournment. Anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And I believe tonight is an open-mic night. So Teresa, will you go ahead and please read the first item of business?
Yes, our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any of these items? Seeing none?
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Item 1A was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items 1B and 2A through C were introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ward, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. I will call item 4A and B together as they are related. They are the application of Kincaid Brewing for an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 205 feet by 136 feet in Canopy Street, P to Q Street on August 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And the application of Top Spin LLC doing business as Tavern on the Square for an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 205 feet by 136 feet in Canopy Street, P to Q Street on August 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And this is for the Hay Market in White event.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. Would the council mind passing over this item for a few minutes? I know that two gentlemen are there and they're talking with Ms. Peters and Mr. Hofer right now about this particular application.
Certainly, I think we can come back and revisit it after our public hearing resolutions following this.
So our public hearing resolutions, I'll call items 5A through D together as they are all related. They are rescinding Resolution A-78230, adopted by the council on June 28th, 1997, for the use of public right-of-way on property located at 525 N Street for installation of a screening fence and operation of the business within portions of the public right-of-way. Rescinding Resolution A-77618, adopted by the city council on September 9, 1996, for the use of public right-of-way on property located at 525 N Street for installation of a screening fence and operation of the business within portions of the public right-of-way. Rescinding Resolution A-77324, adopted by the city council on April 8th, 1996, for the use of public right-of-way on property located at 525 N Street for installation of a flat concrete slab within the public right-of-way. And rescinding Resolution A-72149, adopted by the city council on July 5th, 1988, for the use of public right-of-way on property located at 525 N Street for erection of a screening fence and operation of its business within portions of the public right-of-way.
Tim C., City Law Department. These are some cleanup items. The clerk actually found them as she was going through some old use-of-right-of-way permits. These, this area is for a business that was operating approximately N Street to L Street and Sixth Street to Fourth Street. There was a number of different sections of, whether it was actually a street right-of-way or alleys that were being used as part of the ongoing operations of that business. And this is just to clean up a number of these, these old resolutions that were, that are still in the books. Most of the land is still, is now owned by the West Hay Market JPA and would be included in the, what's, what's proposed as the new parkland area for the West Hay Market area. So this, these are really just cleanup items. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Richard?
Would you have a map?
I do.
This the old salvage area?
Mostly, yeah.
This was Alter Trading Company?
Yeah, they were actually given to Knight and Iron and Metal Company. So the areas are highlighted. This is the Sixth Street right-of-way and this is N Street. The yellow is all part of that. The green one is, so the yellow was in 1988. The green was given in 1996. Another small section of the M Street right-of-way. This was for, I think it was to allow them to put down asphalt or concrete for drainage purposes. The purple is to, was to allow them to have a sign in the N Street right-of-way. And then the pink is L Street, Fifth Street, and some alleys down the general area.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I guess we can vote on the resolutions.
All right. Let's see. 5A was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Approved by Shob, seconded?
By Washington.
Oh, who did it? Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5B was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Please call, oh, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5C was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, moved by Shob, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then 5D was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Shob, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Now we'll return to our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call items 4A and B together as they're both SDLs related to an outdoor area measuring approximately 205 feet by 136 feet in Canopy Street, P to Q Street on August 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. One is for Kincaid Brewing Company and the other is for Tavern on the Square.
Wonderful. Be sure and sign in, but whoever would like to tell us more about the event, please feel free to go ahead and speak.
I'm sorry. My name is Matt Taylor. I'm the owner of Tavern on the Square and the Other Room in the Hay Market. This is for an event, Hay Market in White, that has previously been held at Pinnacle Bank Arena. They're moving it outside to the streets this year. You know, weather-dependent, obviously, with an asterisk. But, so we are changing a few things. Pinnacle, obviously, in Pinnacle provided the alcohol before. And now they're talking to us and Kincaid. I'm on the Hay Market Development Board, and so I've been involved in some of the meetings leading up to this. But, you know, because of my profession, I, I get the ticket, all right? So, but Kincaid, it's right outside Kincaid's back door. And so we want to involve all businesses in the Hay Market. You know, open to any questions.
Right.
Okay, so this is a little unusual. And I know it precipitated some talk just before the meeting and during the meeting. So would you review for us what the discussion, what conclusions you've come to about how this space is going to be shared and how responsibility will be assigned?
Sure. Thanks, Roy. So this is my first time ever applying for an SDL, sharing it with someone else, or I guess two SDLs, and shared liability is the way I understand it. So I talked to Teresa at, at the clerk's office and have talked to Liquor Control as well. They said, you know, from time to time this happens, it's not very common, but from time to time it happens. You guys share liability and you just have to be aware of that. Which, you know, personally just makes me slightly uneasy. We serve on the university frequently and if you get a ticket, you can't serve on the university for five years. And so that's a big deal to me because that's, you know, a decent source of, of revenue for us. But we've, we've chatted about this already. We're, we're both posting security staff on the way in. It's a 21-and-over event. I don't know if you guys have seen any of the promotions, but I, I don't think anybody's going to be even scaring 21 at this party. It's going to be mostly...
Careful.
It will be... It will be experienced people at the, at the party for the most part.
Looking for mature individuals, right?
You know, I feel okay about it, but, you know, it is, it is abnormal. Unaware to us.
Not quite as abnormal for the brewing world. We, we do a lot of festivals every year where we have license on top of licenses. So we have come to trust other breweries that are, they're going to do the right thing. I've obviously seen how Matt runs his business and, and so I am comfortable going in with him and, and knowing that we'll both have our security guys that we're bringing in, guys that we work with on every Husker game, every event. For me, I look at this event as way less liability than like even like a Husker game just because the amount of people is not going to be there and, and we're going to have a little bit more of our arms around it. Jumping off Matt, I, you know, I think it'll be something that we, we both are going in with, with open eyes and knowing that the liability is shared and, and we're going to hammer that into our staff's head and, and make a great event.
What differences?
Could you give your name?
Sorry, that?
Give your name.
My name, yeah, Cody Schmick.
Thank you.
C-O-D-Y-S-C-H-M-I-C-K.
So are you both serving beer or are you both, are you serving different kinds of drinks?
We're going to have the same stuff at both bars, just so there's not confusion for the guests.
And will law enforcement be able to tell the difference between somebody who got something from one place versus the other?
No, I guess that's where the shared liability comes in, so.
When I looked at both of the applications, one application said it was six to midnight, one said 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. So are you going to have an event at the same time?
No, and that was my fault. The 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. was, that's what we do for Husker games, just so we have that setup and teardown time. And I took that license and then so that was my fault and I apologize for that. We're going to go with, with what was on Matt's license.
Okay. On Matt's license, it said 200 to 300, yours said 600.
We actually, that, mine was early once again. Ticket sales are showing between 200 and 300, so.
Okay. Wristbanding, you mentioned right on the first page of yours. It was mentioned on the second page, but it did say that if, you made a distinction that made me think that there might be people under 21.
Once again, regurgitation of another license and, and we got those things ironed out, so.
Thank you.
Matt's a pro at this, I'm still new, so.
And when you talk about shared liability, do you each have equal bonds on this? I mean, are you, did you sign an agreement with each other? How do you know that you're inequally on liability?
Well, we're not necessarily, right? That was what I heard is if a minor leaves with a drink or over-intoxication or something like that, a ticket comes up, we would both then get the ticket.
Okay.
Which, eyes wide open, we know that.
Thank you.
Something else.
Tony, could you come up and help explain some of the confusion?
Take mine, Tony.
We'll keep them up here just in case they need to chime in. But, so Tiny Peters, Assistant City Attorney. My concerns are not, not with the applicants at all or the event itself. It's just that this concept, we've been asked before to do something similar as raise concerns and in the past we have told them that we would not approve something similar. So if you think of the SDL, it's a temporary license to use a premise. So under our normal daily operating, they each have their own license, no one else can serve in their premise. They can allow someone to come in and serve under their license. So if you apply those kind of same rules to this SDL, it's a, you know, it's their licensed premise. And, and historically in the past, the Liquor Commission would allow them to add a person onto their license. So I get the license, but someone else can come in and serve, but I take responsibility for what happens in my licensed premise. The concept here is going to be a little bit different. They each have like an overlapping license, much like what we have with the Entertainment District. And, and that's why we created the Entertainment District in order to allow that to happen. And in that, we established some rules like designated cups, a universal kind of security team so that the rules were being applied equally. And we don't have that here. I think, you know, they'll work through some of those things. But if we approve this one, I expect that you will get Eighth Street, Peak Street, alleys, downtown Lincoln because we've had those requests in the past. So I just want you to go in with your eyes wide open that if you do approve this one, expect that you will get more. And so we kind of have to think about how we're going to do it. These other events, the breweries are much like the wineries where they've, they've operated a little bit differently. So I'm not surprised. I don't know that we've had one here because I haven't seen, seen a license for it. So I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Sure, if I may. So this is a question for you, Tanya, not the applicants. So until, most of us sat down, we didn't know it was a concern for law.
Yes.
So it would have been helpful.
And that's my fault. I'm sorry. I, it was on my plate and, and time got away from me. So that, I take full responsibility, so I'm sorry.
I guess in fairness to the applicants, that's a concern.
Yes, yes. And normally I would send you an email listing out these, these concerns. But we had some different moving pieces early on and my attention got diverted, so.
Because I would just add that that event is a great event and I think all of us have either been there or supported that event. We want to be, I want to be supportive of the applicants and the process. Had I known in advance, it would have been helpful.
Well, I told them, I told them, if we got down to it and it looked like it was going to be denied, one of them had to, will have to volunteer to do the event because I don't want the event not to happen, right?
That would be traumatic, yes. We don't want that to happen.
In the past, the event was done by one operator. And so this is a little different. So they're, they're aware of that and we'll just kind of see how you feel.
Thank you.
So Tanya, in the past when we've had the events in the Hay Market, particularly on Canopy Street, all the other vendors that were there, they all had shared liability as well?
They do. It's, it's, their license is different than the other establishments.
Got it.
So they have more responsibility. They go in with that understanding and we have those rules in place. Like one of the questions I asked them, because they, they both want to serve the same liquor and they, they want both tents or whatever to be available, is are you going to have the same pricing? Because that's, you know, obviously another issue you have if, if one's cheaper than the other and they plan to have the same pricing. But these are some of those things, when you're working together, you have to sort those out. And are, do your bouncers have the same goals, the same rules? And that works better in that more permanent license setting, or it should anyway. So this will be a little bit different. I'm just want you to know that if we do this one, you will get more requests. So be thinking about what standards you want to have in place.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, gentlemen, but Kincaid, you've done something like this before where you've had a screened-in area in an SDL out your back door.
Yes, sir.
Maybe at the Hay Market at White event last year.
Well, not last year. We've only, we haven't been there quite a year yet, so.
So what precipitated going with two different vendors this time? How did we end up with two different people?
This event is, I guess, a little bit more higher-end than like a, a tailgate party or a beer garden type thing. So we wanted to make sure that the service was really top-notch. Nobody was waiting. We were, we were just taking care of folks. They're paying a ticket price for this, whereas some of our other licenses, they just come in for free. And so we wanted to make sure that we were putting together something that was higher-end feeling. And so we're like, we're dressing up our bars more. I mean, our, our staff is going to all wear the same thing and, and so that was part of the reason. I think the other reason was I, I have a ton of respect for what Matt does and I, I wanted to do an event with him, to be honest with you. So that was appealing to me.
And again, in the past, Benny, it's been at PBA. And so they just serve, right? And so this is a new, us moving to the street is, is a different kind of thing. And the Hay Market Development Board wants to involve as many businesses as they can, right? I mean, the, the goal of the board is to, to help the businesses in the, in the neighborhood. And so if they can involve more people, I mean, that's kind of the goal of the board. So while, I'm not trying to make history here, Tanya. I know, I know, I know, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. I was just wondering how it evolved to be so many different parties doing this. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
And so I have a question for both of you. So what are the things besides pricing, but are you going to be serving out of the same type of cups? Are you going to have the same security detail? You're going to hire one security for, that you're both working with? Or tell me, what, what are some of the conditions that Tanya had covered that would be maybe new ground for, for you all?
Sure. Yeah, so we are sharing some security liability, right? We're each sending a person to, to work security at the front door as they check in. Again, it is a 21-and-over event, so we're not as worried about minors. My more concern is over-serving, right? And so there will be four different bars. One of the bars will be Kincaid's that'll be right outside the back door. And because we've just, we do a lot of catering at Tavern on the Square and the Other Room, we have, we bought these portable bars, we spent some money on them. They're, they light up and they have drink rails and ice bins and they're real fancy, right? So, but we're also pre, we're also pre-bashing some other-room cocktails for speed, but they, there'll be other-room style cocktails, but pre-bashed.
Any other questions?
What's your rain date? What are your plans if it rains?
Sorry, don't do it this year.
Okay.
So hopefully Mother Nature is a Hay Market and, and White fan. We'll see.
Yeah. Let's hope so. Okay. Any other questions?
If, if council wanted to give it a little bit more thought, wanted a little bit more information, they have about a week, you know, they have a week yet, so it could be continued until next Monday. The problem with doing that is it kind of leaves them in, up in the air.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you all.
Thanks.
I think we can vote on these resolutions. Oh, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I'm going to move approval of item 4A and 4B. I think my concerns have been answered. Happy to support this.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Christensen and seconded by Councilwoman Washington?
Ward.
Oh, Ward. I'll get this right.
It's a W name.
Sorry about that. Is there any further discussion? I too will support this because I think it's an important event that really showcases our Hay Market and it is an event that's really well-done, so. And let's hope Mother Nature does cooperate. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Back to public hearing, ordinance is second reading. That concludes our public hea, oh, we do have public hearing, ordinance is second reading. Item 6A, street name change, 19004, to remove all reference to Randolph Street bypass for a portion of G Street and to remove all reference to Randolph Street bypass for a portion of Randolph Street generally located between South 21st Street and Capitol Parkway.
Good afternoon. David Carey with the Planning Department. Appreciate your time today. What we have here is what I would call a, we, we found out something and want to clean it up now. Decades ago, there was the, the expansion at Lincoln High for an activities center that required, if it was going to happen, a rerouting of Randolph Street. And what we ended up with is what we have out there today, which is kind of that curve that goes south of the, of the LPS footprint. And so for, for many years now, it's been referred to as Randolph Street bypass. And looking at this recently, I believe due to the fact that some street, uh, street sign changes and updates were needed by L.T.U., it became apparent to us that that street name change was never made official. And so when we looked into that more formally, we discussed it and the Street Name Change Committee basically came around to, why don't we just simply call it half Randolph Street and half of a G Street, which is the rest of the network out there? That seemed to make sense. There was very little impact on property owners. There are only nine affected property owners with LPS being the majority owner along that stretch. They are okay with it. The other properties do not address off of Randolph Street bypass, so going to Randolph or G Street does not impact them whatsoever. So we are proposing for you to consider changing that name so that it basically, at the 23rd Street point, the midpoint of that curve, the west half would be G Street, the east half would be Randolph Street. And then that would be, be, bring clarity to everyone involved and we will have, have addressed the fact that we never formally changed it to the bypass anyways. So with any, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the sake of conversation, the last time someone came before us asking for a street name change, we thought we did the right thing and we kind of, is there anyone in opposition? Or is this going to cause us any trouble in the future?
I don't believe it will cause any trouble in the future. We, we do not have anyone in opposition of this at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.